I just wanted to report that there's no action taken during the following session. As I could call, we need to order then if everybody will stand for the class list. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item G, communications. Our student representative who is not available tonight, so we have our superintendent's report.
Just want to let the board know that we'll be continuing negotiations with the teachers union tomorrow. Hopefully be wrapping up.
No, I have two reports tonight. And I don't want to bore you with the facts about the budget again and what we're doing, but we had a meeting with county superintendents, all the superintendents of counties, talking about the effects of the new funding formula. Everybody's running around trying to make sure that we have everything correctly in place before it actually starts to happen. For you, next this year is going to be a practice run on the test and then next year council will reveal. What they're finding out in New York did a first smarter balance assessment that it's real difficult to to score and that what the score is going to look like the first year are pretty tough whenever you try your skill. So they'll all get prepared to make sure the technology works as we are as well. It's going to be a challenge for many of us.
Okay, item H, public comment on agenda items and non-agenda items conditions. This is the time and place to address the school board. State law prohibits the board from acting on issues not included on the agenda. However, requests may be made for discussion of specific groups at subsequent meetings. Upon recognition by the president of the board, please come forward and identify yourself before speaking. The Board of Education deserves a right to live in speaking time for three minutes or less per individual. And I have speaker cards here. Is there anybody else who has one out there? That would like to speak later. Okay, then if not, I have Erica Garcia.
Can you come back?
No, okay, if she comes back, we'll do her. Okay, Karen Asher?
Some of the documents that I have have school board members' names on it because I was wanting out of colored ink and I wanted to make sure you all got the ones in color. Your copies have more words than I'm going to say. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Fillmore High School is disintegrating. For 25 years, I saw improvement in student achievement and college acceptance rates. During my 26th and 27th year, I saw established practices be falling away. This year, Fillmore High School is crumbling and you, the members of the school board, have done nothing to stop it. Not even to go visit the school to investigate problems brought to your attention. Leadership is an active process. There are two issues that we're going to talk about. One is the preparation for WASPs accreditation and graduation of students. Last month, the Brown Act was violated when I was told that I could only ask questions, so I'm speaking on WASPs from last month. The WASPs self-study is an 18-month process. As the head counselor last year, I brought WASPs to Mr. Messman's attention each and every month. I worked through the chain of command and Mr. Johnson knew about the problems. He had the study rescheduled. The self-study for this rescheduled visit should have started in May of 2013, not in January of 2014. I also brought my concerns regarding WASPs to the school board's attention in the fall and it just started in January. Two weeks ago, the WASPs presentation by Mr. Messman was a classic example of smoke and mirrors. He presented nothing of substance. I have attached sample documents from the WASPs website for you to look at. And here's a list of problems. There is no timeline. The WASPs cannot be accomplished without concrete goals. An 18-month collaborative process cannot be completed in April, May, August, and September. That is the blue document. The evidence boxes will hand it out in the beginning of March. Evidence is crucial to the WASPs evaluation, but the boxes are empty. That's the white document. Teachers have not received the 137 questions or as WASPs asked, the prompts that need answering by the focus groups. I gave you the first two pages of categories A and C and there are five categories that make up the focus groups. That's green. There is no plan for teachers to visit each other's classrooms as required by WASPs. That's pink document. Involvement by all stakeholders is a major component of the WASPs process. No parents, students, or board members have attended any focus meetings. You saw pictures of the focus group committees. They are not balanced and the group assignments were given out in the middle of January with a revised list mid-March. Not in October of last year when the classes should have started. If you look at the colored chart, I created the top chart, which is an example of what the balance should be for the WASPs committee. It was easy to do. Mr. Messman created the lower chart. Mr. Messman has given Mrs. Dabs the title of the WASPs coordinator, but none of the authority. Mr. Messman blames her for all of the problems related to WASPs. This lack of action for WASPs preparation is a failure of leadership by the principal. And for your benefit in your documents, you have the WASPs website. It's very easy to find all the documentation you need. Second, I speak about the Fillmore High School seniors in danger of not graduating. I want to make it clear that I've not spoken to the high school counselors because I do not want them to be the target of retribution. From school board members, I have been told that 58 seniors are in danger of not graduating due to not needing the math requirements. That is 30% of the senior class of 2014. For comparison, in last year's class, only three students did not graduate. What happened? Succeedly and poorly thought out changing policy caused this disaster. In the spring of 2013, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Messman, Mrs. Lyon, and I met twice to discuss the changes in mathematics. I provided Mr. Johnson with the information he requested about students who would be adversely affected, including names. There were 112 names on that list. Those 112 students represent one half of the senior of last year's junior class. Despite knowing the adverse impact on one half of the junior class, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Messman went ahead with their policy changes. After exhausting the path through the chain of command, I presented this information to the school board in the spring of 2013 and began in the fall. Six weeks into the school year, the failure of the policy changes became clear and the requirement for Algebra II was dropped. However, the policy of not allowing two math classes at the same time remained in place. It is this policy that has jeopardized the graduation of many of these 58 seniors. Since I do not ask the counselors to information, I can only use documents that I have from the end of last year. I created a spreadsheet for Mrs. Sanchez, the new Fillmore High School counselor, which gave for all of the graduation standards for each senior with the last name starting A to L. For evidence, I have attached a copy for you. This is only a list of students, and obviously their names are not listed, but their IDs are, who need two or three math classes and already graduated. This has 30 students on it for half of the alphabet. So you can figure that at this time, there were about 60 students who still needed two or three math classes and the policy prevented them from doing that. There are undoubtedly other factors besides math which contribute to the number of students in danger of not graduating. I am not aware of these academic issues. However, I do know and speak to the students that there is no school spirit. Seniors are in a tailspin of failure and depression. Fear of failure breeds failure and that is a pervasive emotion at Fillmore High School for both students and staff. I wish I could put more before you than just numbers of students in jeopardy of not graduating. Showing you their faces would drive home the point. Without a graduation diploma, their lives would be put on hold. Some may have wanted to join our forces, probably, possibly to be Navy SEALs, but they will not be able to fulfill their dreams. This lack of support for students is a failure of leadership by the principal. Board members, you have been presented with hard evidence on the following for the past few weeks and months. Mr. Messman has not acted effectively on WASPs. Mr. Messman has not acted effectively on graduation problems. Mr. Messman has not acted effectively and has lied to the school side council. Mr. Messman is not a leader. Mr. Messman has never had the skills to lead Fillmore High School. Board members, the path forward is clear. Leadership is an active process. You need to act. Place Mr. Messman on administrative leave and bring in an interim principal until a new superintendent can hire a principal for Fillmore High School. You are the top of the chain of command. You are the leaders of the Fillmore Unified School District. And it is time to become the active leaders you were voted to be.
Okay, Barbara, is it Nakasone?
Good try there. Hi, I'm Dr. Barbara Nakasone and I wrote a letter to the Fillmore Gazette and I sent a copy to each of the board members. And I thought that since I was someone who was outside of town, that you'd like to see who it is who thought they were cheeky enough to make a comment upon what was going on at Fillmore. I think you remember from the letter that my grandparents had a boarding house here in Fillmore and it's my understanding that they housed railroad workers in their boarding house. And I'm always struck when I come into town how much that your California Pioneer Town looks like a California Pioneer Town that my dad raised me in. My dad wasn't able to stay in Fillmore, so I wasn't born here and I wasn't raised here. But he came here often because my dad still had friends here. And I have a heartfelt desire to make sure that Fillmore is a high-performing school with high-performing students. One thing that I would like to encourage is that in the midst of change, it is difficult when you raise standards and when more is expected of you now than has been expected of you in the past. And sometimes it gets scary and sometimes students have to gear up and sometimes we have to go before school and after school to make sure that we're prepared for the world that's out there. My dad's education and my education was very much the same. My daughter's education was very different from mine and when I'm looking at what my grandkids are doing, oh my lord, they're doing so much more in a technical and digital world. I think we forget sometimes that we're not raising students here in Fillmore to compete with San Pola or Ventura or Camarillo. We're raising students here that are going to compete around the world, Singapore, Tokyo, Berlin. Name any major city in the world. We often forget that China has more advanced students than we have students. My son-in-law happens to be an entrepreneur with successful businesses. And he walked into my kitchen one day and he said, "I worry what country my boys are going to have to go to in order to find a job." My dad had to leave Fillmore and go to another Pioneer Town. He worked for the railroad. It's the same kind of railroad that's sitting down here. My children weren't able to stay in the town that I raised them in and I have one on both coasts. We are challenged that our students with probably a lot less money than some of the neighboring districts are going to have to compete in the same world's market. It's going to be like Moneyball. That movie that Brad Pitt did on the change of how they did Major League Baseball. And the point of that movie wasn't so much that the Oakland A's went and won the World Series. What it was is that they took a ball team that had a very low financial backing and made them compete equally with ball teams that had far more money than they had. They equaled the playing field. Because it wasn't any longer how pretty you were, how great your form was, or how many times you got to be interviewed by the public. What started to matter was how many times you got on base. We are teaching our students the essentials with probably a very limited budget and we are teaching them to compete on a world's market. I'm proud that I have roots in Fillmore. I'm proud every time I come into town, every time I see the railroad, every time I see the hills and I walk along the streets and I find so many friendly people. I wish I could have been raised here, but I wasn't. But I want to encourage you to continue to bring in the best performing people that you possibly can bring. And you brought that team here. They have a record of performance. Was it happy everywhere they were? Probably not. Was everybody content? Probably not. But the results were there. We often bring in outside people and the best and people who didn't grow up here to be our doctors, to be our police chiefs, to be the wives that are the city planners. We bring in other people who weren't raised here. And we bring them in to improve us, to evaluate us, and to show us what we need to do to get ourselves competing in a wide world market. You're doing a great job and it's a brave job and it has a moral imperative to it. So we are going to be standing with you whether we're sitting here in Fillmore or I'm sitting in Campbell, California. I'm still pulling for Fillmore High School.
Okay, is Karen? No, we also. Erica? Is Erica coming? Erica Garcia? Okay, moving on then to item I, information and discussion. Do you want to go ahead, Michael, introduce those?
Yes, there are a couple of items here that we would like to update the board on. One is on bullying, what we're doing with bullying. We should have been that, cyberbullying. Also harassment, under the umbrella of harassment, we'd like to update on that. As a follow-up on the presentation by the lawyer, last time we had a regular meeting. So I'll ask Carol and Gary to come up and share this particular piece of information with the board. And then I'll give an overview on the second item having to do with ACES. Thank you and we, colleagues. Again, and just to give you members of the board, cabinet, related staff, and colleagues. It's really a privilege for Cheryl and I to present here this evening, unfortunately, to be a part of this effort, but I want to acknowledge I'm sitting next to the president, my experience, unfortunately. The first part, we do want to address bullying in schools, prevention intervention and consequences and the procedures that follow from the laws, policies, and practices. I'd like to show you that progression. And what you'll learn hopefully is that you're strategically to be able to identify bullying and cyberbullying behaviors within the context of laws, policies, and practices that govern enforcement within the district. And also that you'll be able to understand procedures that prevent and eliminate the bullying and cyberbullying misconduct. I think it's important first off as we look to define harassment or look at harassment as kind of overarching area of misconduct as defined by law, policies, and practices. And actually, and I know we focus so much on cyberbullying right now, it's a very big concern, that actually cyberbullying is a part of harassment. And you see the relationship between bullying and cyberbullying. But also as you look at sexual harassment, so these are kind of the top four areas that we've really been working on and focusing on for the schools, we'll have attention frankly. So, and going further, when you look at the relationship with a bully, perpetrator, and a victim, that you have a dominant party and repeatedly hurting, threatening, or tormenting the victim. That's important that when you mention being intentional, happy more than once, that's really a condition of harassment. So there you see the relationship between bullying and harassment, how it relates to that. And also there's a marked imbalance of power and that imbalance can be real, perceived, emotional, physical. And there's a typical issue there, well, boys typically more direct verbal confrontation, very confrontational, physical means. Girls, again, typically, characteristically more indirect, leaving others out or spreading rumors that can be very detrimental damaging. And just as much. Cyberbullying, and there's also a reference to cyberbullying as digital drama. I'm not really used to that, but I'll just do that right now. And again, kind of carrying on with the harassment paradigm, wilful and repeated harm, perpetrated through the use of computers, cell phones, and electronic devices. And again, they tend to harass, intimidate, and humiliate, to be very devastating. There's a foundation to that and as we look at the relationship of our laws. And suffice it to say, as we look at SB 7789, AB 1156, you see the progression through the years. There are a lot of laws, but essentially, I believe that they can be kind of understood and their impact as far as legislating that schools, districts develop responsible policies, follow laws consistently. They review their processes agilely and they include those in your state's school plans. So there's constant vigilance, monitoring, and compliance. That follows the board policy. And fortunately, Ms. Behringer is the author of many things here, including that bullying policy. It does establish that bullying is not tolerated. It does direct stakeholders to develop anti-bullying strategies. And then if you look at three critical areas, defining areas of prevention intervention, very thorough, complex investigation process, kind of like for those that lead to carefully thought out consequences. It's a very emotional issue, obviously, but we need to follow the process responsibly. Moving into the prevention intervention areas. We have made available and have distributed, again, last year, there's an educator's guide to bullying prevention and I have a copy we hand out here. I'll pass it along if you'd like. And that went to all of our staff members. Another one, cyberbullying identification, prevention, and response to our staff, teachers. Encouraging them to share lessons or to review those classes. And also at secondary, and Donna and I meant to get these out to elementary too more so, but it really is really focusing on teens. And there's this poster here that is in the secondary classrooms responding to cyberbullying and cyber safety and the top 10 tips for teens in the secondary level. Also, addressing another area that we're looking to further. There are some programs that we have made available that we will be looking at for further development and implication. Second step, it's a social skills training program. It's really, really, really very nice. Primarily for K-5 and it really does teach social emotional interaction, cooperative interaction with our K through 5th graders. Wonderful. CHAMP really is, and it is primarily a classroom management program that also, according to research, some people would cite the researches that it shows where it's going to use widespread basis increases in student achievement and decreases in behavior. And so the acronym and I put those there so I wouldn't forget. So a conversation, you know, what is acceptable topics? How do, what are ways that students can gain help? How do they get teacher's attention? Activity, what are the task objectives and outcomes that we're looking for? Movement, can students move? What's acceptable? Participation, if we look at focusing on focused student behavior and engagement, what does that look like? And then if those steps are followed, they lead to success. Important consideration for the programs, working interventions, directed interventions as well, there's a lot of emphasis on impacting the school climate and the real positive gains that people report through school climate. And these are programs that address school climate. Coincidentally, and to our advantage really, the Children's Internet Protection Act in 2012 has now mandated that this year we have to pilot a program on digital citizenship. I would credit, if I could, Lori Merrill actually has been really working on that inter-stem program. I remember when I was set up last year and she's done a good job on that. But we met with Dana Rainspan in terms of this program. And really, it's approved by VECO, Metro County Office of Education. And it is online. It covers grades K through 12. And we're required this year as a pilot to select, or sites will help select, one grade level, one classroom, one grade level per site. And there are six package lessons in there. We will likely focus on two of them. And again, one of those deals directly with cyberbullying. So it's a really great exposure and introduction from grade K up through 12 that they'll get exposure to an area of serious concern for us, that we want to make sure that we address. Mentioned here the acceptable use policy. And again, I could say to that, Ms. Behringer updated our policies, she did. And the current update request is to collect signatures once a year on the updated AUPs from students. There's a student form and a staff form. And there's a direct impact on the E-Rate rate which we are charged for access to, use of, internet access and so forth. So you see there's a flow from the laws, policies, and intervention, any investigation, procedural steps, again, a site or a main source, in terms of bullying, harassment, intimidation, these. intimidation discrimination policy. It does a thorough job of describing the expectations for student behavior and our responsibility as staff or responsible intervention. It does really firmly establish conditions that affect student outcomes, and explains the steps and process of reporting these incidents in a very timely and responsible manner with accountability, and actually I could show, could project the forms on the screen, but I want to share the forms that have been delivered to each of the schools, and it really does, they're quite, investigation resolution of bullying, harassment, discrimination. It identifies the aggressor, identifies the witnesses, who are the targets, you know, and reports the findings. I'll pass this around, I can, again, I can't project later, but the action taken, really, really quite thorough in its documentation and recording and accountability. There are forms in English and Spanish, and forms that are kept in the office for reporting by students or parents, so it's really quite comprehensive. I can project that here.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say about this is, this is just site based, but under the laws for bullying, you do, you can go through a uniform complaint policy if it's not resolved at the site, so there are multiple layers to a complaint if necessary. Hopefully, it's resolved always at the site though.
And as we look at consequences, there are really important factors that we need to consider before determining the appropriate consequence, and we can recall last week's presentation by our attorney, Erin, and this relates to that, that really prior to consequencing our parties, that there really must be given, important consideration for the levels of developmental, concerted levels of our parties that involve the degree of harm, the circumstances, trying to circumstances, the type of behavior, nature exactly, and the history of past incidents or similar patterns, continued patterns of behavior. The relationship between the parties, we were happily joking about girlfriend, boyfriend, best friends, and what's the context there in which the instance occurred, and then all of these factors really must be taken into account, provided due process, and that sometimes makes it quite challenging for the consequences or further legal requirements. And these are ED Code sections that are listed actually on our suspension sheet, and that can result in multiple days, one through five days of suspension through our suspension policy. But again, I do want to point out, and this is sometimes, again, this is really due process, especially now, that it does state quite clearly that suspension shall be imposed only when other means of correction be able to bring about proper conduct. However, there is the understanding that any violation of the 4900 ED Code can lead to suspension, you know, that is a consideration. But here's examples, and you see how they do address harassment, you can see that on harassment, complaint and witness, 4900 R, active bullying included, but not limited to, so that includes the cyberbullying component. Two others here, here's our reference to sexual harassment against other district staff personnel or pupils. Okay, and then engaged harassment, threats or intuitions also, it provides it to more general, more general harassment. And again, in reference to AB 1729, and I believe this reflects a little bit on the school climate aspect, and how that's becoming such a strong push for that. It does define as the test of finding other means of support, finding that balance, obviously you want to have accountability at the same time, as actually statewide suspension expulsion rates are dropping because of the changes in the laws and so forth, but that these means of support must be age appropriate, and they must address and make the effort to correct this behavior, such examples, and we do have these, I know that they are in place at sites, I'm not sure on what consistence, how consistently that might be, but compensating, counseling, conflict resolution, for sort of justice, is that effort to return a situation between disputants, combatants, whatever, to some sense of normalcy, where there's some sort of, you're teaching, positive interaction, you know, I've heard examples such as, maybe you go through social skills training, they have lunch together, or something as simple as that potentially. And in general, these sorts of positive pledges, help label, positive intervention, positive intervention support, DAS, and both Second Step and CHAMPs are just those sorts of approaches programs. And restitution, that's payback, not payback, but payback like paying for the window you just broke, you thirty grand. So, unfortunately, we do have resources, in particular this year, I've had the opportunity to really, and I know some of our colleagues were attending these, but I know that we're now partners with this Calfred grant, the money's coming in, I know that there's partnership with the sheriff's department, some of the community agencies, and it's really focused on secondary, I know that our staff are involved, but it does increase the counseling, it does target other agencies as well, provide, you know, some educational opportunities for, it's targeted at a number of youth, with the goal to decrease misconduct and increase student achievement. It does, again, it does include the sheriff, SRO, again, I appreciate VCO or the Metro County Office of Education there, but they're providing some of our CHAMPs training right now at middle school in particular, and some of our elementary, or all of the elementary sites have that opportunity to participate on some of the orientations. The cyber compliance program, digital citizenship very tightly, I'm happy to have that opportunity to help out with Amber, and she's working so hard right now doing so many other things, I'm glad to kind of chip in a little bit there, and also with my base and the tech people, because I'm working hard on that. And then again, there's an anti-bullying online training program that we're kind of piloting now, don't have a lot of people on that, but I believe five or six people, we're kind of looking at it to see if it's something that may, if it does result in a certificate and questions of whether we might consider that after we've taken that, I believe through the, through the April, month of April, have the opportunity to take that and certify.
Any questions?
I just want to know if we have researched any other programs, because I know Northern California District, I can't remember the name of it right now, but one of the conferences I went to, they concentrated, the program that concentrated on students who are bystanders, who are watching kids being bullied, and the fact that if you can educate that group of students, you know, to right away, stop, you know, not allow it to happen, that that brings down the bullying issues a lot. And so, I just wondered if we had researched any of those, because I know, in fact, I saw Sarah Hansen at Barnes about three or four months ago, and she asked, you know, they had presented $12,000 to the district for bullying, and I just wondered if that was something that, you know, that we couldn't do, so that we don't just concentrate on the victims and the bullying, but if we can get the majority of the students, instead of just standing there watching, to step in, you know, that that would make a major difference.
Most, most of the programs have something, some piece of it that talks to the bystanders. It really is talking about training everyone, training the adults in the area, training the students that are being bullied and are victims, working with the bullies to curb that, but also what the bystanders, what their responsibilities are as well, and almost, and most of the programs I've looked at do, do work on that or address that issue. And certainly, a lot of the programs that you get coming into the schools that aren't a program you buy, that, you know, those, like, I can't remember what the one was that more that I liked a lot, they always address it. So, there, that's something they're very aware of, and Amber sent out an email with an article from Edutopia, and it talks about the six Rs, and that's one of the six Rs. And so, it's definitely something that we do need to make sure is addressed.
It actually was on your brochure that you just...
Yes.
It's in there.
Yes. And what I think, and what I think needs to happen is we just need to be very deliberate. I know you were here when we started the sexual harassment, so I know you remember, and through that being very deliberate about the message you sent, it made a big difference in kids' behavior toward each other on that subject. We were, I just remember so many incidents prior to that and after that, when kids knew what their responsibilities were, and how they were supposed to behave, and what the expectations were, it changed everything. And I, so I think with the bullying, it's more than just putting out a few trifles or, you know, it's making a concerted effort, whether it's something that teachers may have an agreement to address every day in the bulletin, whether, and something as simple as that, or we, and we commit to, you know, once a quarter, a period, or some amount of time, we go through something to do with bullying, or sexual harassment and pulling that piece in, because that's one of those pieces we don't want to lose, it's a law. So, I think it's just a matter of being very, very deliberate while we also look for a program that, like you're talking about, that might offer us a much wider variety of training, you know, for teachers, for students.
Right, right. Well, and it's for all employees, because a custodian can see something happening, or a secretary or somebody, yeah.
Absolutely.
I think it might also help, I know that since we received that grant, it might also help to kind of report at some point where that grant money has been spent, so that they, you know, we report back. Essentially, when people do something nice like that, you know, I think it'd be good to let them know how that money's being spent.
I did share, I did have the opportunity to talk with Ms. Hansen, and she has a colleague with her, who is her colleague, we did sit down about, not quite a month ago, we kind of shared with her where we're going, but where we're inviting them. And also to address, I know it's on there, I was looking at one of the lessons on Second Step, because I had to look a little bit, and it was quite impressive, and this is exactly what it talks about, that everybody has responsibility, it's not just, you know, between the bully, perpetrator and victim, but it really involves responsibility for all. And there's a real strong point they make about the difference between telling, reporting and telling. Telling, reporting is not telling, there's a big lesson on that.
How do you approach this with the high school kids? They tend to be more jaded, pardon, jaded.
When I, right, when I was talking about that just a minute ago, I think it's really the kids that need to hear it and hear it over and over and over again, probably your secondary students, they don't, they don't want the cutesy pie program that they're going to hear about once a week or once a month, they just need to know, this is unacceptable behavior, and this is what will happen to you if you continue to go down that path. I know that, well, I think you were here when they introduced the sexual harassment piece as well, and that was just simply everybody agreeing from, I know we started in kindergarten, not talking about sexual harassment, but talking about, you know, being able to tell somebody no if you didn't like something, or stop, you know, just those two simple words. And it also works with bullying, but I, and then when you got into third, fourth and fifth grade, it was much more about, you know, that interaction between two kids that might be labeled sexual harassment. And I did notice, not being at the high school, you may have noticed something different, but I did notice that kids really knew what it was, they really understood what it was, and they really made an effort to not go down that road, and all the kids knew, so they knew you weren't going to block a girl walking down the hallway, or grab her, or, you know, some of those things that kids think are funny and don't stop to think about because we don't teach them that that's not acceptable. So, with high school, it may be less fun, but I think we need the material that's in their face, maybe not every day of the week, but very often.
Let me give you an example. We had a problem at Moore Park High School with the word gay, about, oh, that is so gay, and just using it over and over again in the high school, by kids, whether in the classroom or outside the classroom. And we made a commitment, that each one of our, that each one of our teachers, for one week, every period, every day for that one week, at the beginning of the period and the end of the period, a minute before the period, after the period started, and a minute before the period was over, that we would brainwash them with this idea that you cannot use the word gay, and this is why. And the reason was, we had gay students at the high school that were contacting the Rainbow Coalition, and of course, they came in, they inserviced our staff, and before they left, they said, if you don't do something about it, we are threatening you with a lawsuit. And that's when we decided that for one week, Monday through Friday, every period, twice, it was, they were going to get this intense talk, not discussion, but you can't do this because of this, you can't use that word because of this, and it will not be tolerated.
And you're right, because that's exactly what research shows, is that it takes the adults, it takes everyone, not even just adults, it takes everyone making that effort, whether you're an adult member of that staff on that campus, any staff member, or a bystander as a student watching this going on, every single person needs to know how to step in and intervene, and what the steps are they need to take, and just that message that this isn't acceptable, because then, when kids decide they want to behave that way, there are people around them that don't think that's okay behavior, and that's exactly right. What a message the teachers on that campus sent, and it's very powerful when that happens. I'm not sure we've quite gotten there yet, but that's the place we want to be, and that's the place we need to go, and then we just need to have very clear messages we send. I think that's the bottom line with that.
I want to share one example, when you say in order of addressing it, perhaps at the secondary level of most high schools, and this is really, and this is, I think, one of only two situations I've dealt with, and there is accountability. Again, we're dealing with a young lady who was very hesitant to report, and actually had claimed that she had made certain reports to her parents and mother, father, very serious, but we opened up the communication in a very confidential manner, in a manner where she felt safe and protected, involved, the middle school staff, I give a lot of credit to Scott Bedd, and actually, what we found out, we looked at evidence, because we had to go through the conditions, qualifying conditions, and really, the degree of harm was quite severe and serious, and they exacted some very serious consequences, there were suspensions and that resulted, so that's that accountability that perhaps we deal with in a little bit more straightforward manner at times at secondary level.
At the secondary level also, it is crucial to develop a culture where students are able to talk to adults, but it's not sedition, it's entitled, you know, somebody else, that they can talk about it. Beyond that, the adults at the high school also need to understand that every report has to be taken seriously, every report has to be taken seriously, followed up. And then the third piece is the swiftness of addressing the issue. At the secondary level, it's a little bit more subtle the way they do it, because of technology devices that's available, it's a little bit more subtle, but in spite of it, if there's a culture that says, it's okay to tell us, that either it's happening on campus or off campus, it's okay to do that, and they know adults are going to respond to it and take it seriously, then... then it allows, you know, for those things to be diminished. Not eliminated, I haven't seen any sign in any high school that's completely eliminated, but diminished, you know, that level. Any other comments?
Anybody else?
What I would like to, to say is that the report you have heard is, we press upon the board as it is clearly stated, it's a national issue, and there's places in our country where, you know, it's been tragic, the outcome. And so I'd like you to feel comfortable and knowledgeable that we are seriously addressing this issue. We're not yet there perfectly, but we're doing everything we can to address it. We're happy for the funding that came in. We're constantly in communication in our department to come up with a systemic approach. Because we do not want to invest the money in this program here, program there, program here. We wanted to take a look at that money as it's one-time expense, to look at a systemic approach, that whether the money is there or not, we can continue it. The challenge for us in finding a program is, how much time will it take to roll it out? How much time will it involve in terms of the classroom process? And what do we give up? And so that's always a challenge for us. And that's where we are, that's a discussion in that services, so we're looking at that. And because of the significance of this issue, we have really asked Carol, who has expertise in this, to continue working with us because we cannot slip in this particular area. Every issue has to be dealt with cleanly and procedurally correct. And Carol has the expertise in that, and we've asked her to continue to make sure that we are on the right path in addressing this particular piece. Now, moving into the next area, which is, I want to make a comment. Any of you been personally bullied? Do you get people that need to feel uncomfortable, you know how important this is? And it's very difficult for those that have not. But for me, it's very personal, last I gave you very serious speech. Because when I was growing up, shortly after the war, we entered the projects, I wondered why people always attacked me, verbally, physically. It took me a while until I was ever in high school before I realized it was because it was after the war, and I was American and Japanese descent. And even though in the projects, my father worked military intelligence, he worked for the armed forces, there was military intelligence, they still didn't matter. And if you've never had that happen to you, and you don't know why people are bullying you, you have no idea, it's because, back then, it was easy. Most bullying started because of your race or your socioeconomic position. But now, it's because you're different, as with gays, because you're doing things. Now it's even more than that, because I don't like you, and they do things. And cyberbullying becomes, is a very serious, I hate to say, but it's very serious. It's causing things to happen in our society that didn't happen before. You handle things differently back then than you do today. And today, because more tragic, more people looking to, to get their anger and their frustration out. And so we have to take this very seriously. And it starts from kindergarten and young, but then it's not all of a sudden in high school you decide, these things are progressive. And until we read it, work with our children early on, and explain to them, it's okay to step in and say no. It's okay to step in and say, I'm not going to let you do that. It's okay, like Carol was trying to say, it's okay. When I was growing up, it was very difficult. And back in those days, after a while, you found out why they were doing it, and sometimes you got aggressive back. And it got you in a lot of trouble as well, and my share of trouble. But I think it's imperative for us as adults to really, every time we get an opportunity to express to the children how important it is to not do that and to stick up for people who are being bullied. It's not acceptable, period. And I don't know how we do that, it's better when you're younger, it's easier when the children are younger. As you get older, they watch TV, and they call you a snitch, and they do all that stuff. So it'd be training when they're young, it's like anything else. When they get older, I think they have a different perspective. That's how we have to do it. And I think Mike was very, very, it's very important. Some of us have had experiences with those things and not knowing why. To, to become an adult and once again, fully realize why people were saying things about you, picking on you, and making you feel uncomfortable. But I've seen it, matter of fact, a couple of times you've become just like that. It's like a pecking order. And in the projects, I was a lone man on the toll of hope. Not because of anything I did, but because of the way I looked. And we have to be very careful how we do things with children, okay? So this is extremely important to us. And I think it should be extremely important for all of the young ladies there, that we take this seriously. Because unless you felt it, okay, it's not as important. Some of us are lucky enough not to have felt that. But if you've ever felt that kind of hate for you, and you don't know why somebody hates you, you've done nothing to them, and yet they're picking on you. So I learned, when I got to junior high, finally, that's all of that thing, bodyguard, the old bodyguard, with the guy, the biggest guy to hang out with, and, and that's what I had to do. Eventually, what I had to do in junior high is I hit, I was a jogging athlete, smaller, but then I hung around with all the big guys, and it stopped me. And we shouldn't have to do that. Children shouldn't have to go out and seek this. We should be stepping in and interviewing on those, on behalf of the kids, all kids, all kids. So I say that, thank you, Mike, great, thank you, Carol, Lucy, and Gary, for doing this.
Okay, just, I think, one more question, John?
Yeah, quick question. So it looks like this presentation was probably from a training that you guys did. So have you guys had training for the staff, or is there a plan for doing training for the staff on bullying?
I think the plan is to maybe work with the principals.
Okay.
And at this moment in time, I would foresee using those, the trifles, the cyber tips, the digital pieces, both the anti-bullying and the, maybe the digital, what did you call that one? The digital, digital citizenship? And trying to get those pieces planned throughout the year. And then, what I would also like to do is find, I don't know if you remember when Jane Campbell was here, but for the tobacco piece, she always found those one or two liners about something, finding that for, for the bulletin, and then, and making a concerted effort to get that in, and then having them work with their teachers to figure out a way they're going to really guarantee it gets to the kids. You know, that, that, and sometimes, there's just sometimes, you know, that, that little glitch in the communication. And so, and, and maybe when we get to decide on a program, then there'll be a lot of training. Because I don't think you can implement those programs without training.
Right, I guess that was my question. I mean, obviously, if this is really important, then I would think we'd want to roll this out in some kind of a plan and strategic manner to, to the staff so that they're all trained.
And since sometimes the training is fairly straightforward and easy, like Second Step provided at the time I bought it, VCR tapes that had training for those lessons and how you did it and why it was important. And we have to bring in and train them.
Okay, well, I mean, also, you guys could do the training.
Well, I think that's already, I believe, this is kind of a compilation from existing efforts that Carol and Rob Roy, you know, some, you know, working with, two of our colleagues here, and we kind of gleaned this information, kind of put it together, and amazingly, it coincided with some responsible processes at the time. So we did do, we had an effort at the middle school, towards the entire district, and she had maybe three reports, a little bit disappointing. But what we found out, we did have some people come in and present for us, that it was really, not really tailored to meet a particular audience in our community. And after they stopped, it was amazing, the answers and the interaction with Deputy Vasquez, Mr. Carroll, myself, somebody others, we were able, I think there is, we always need to be learning, but it was amazing how well we could actually spot on the act the interests and concerns here.
Okay, last, Kathy, you had a question?
I did, I had a quick question. I'm just wondering if there would be, would you get to all your training, if there would be an opportunity to get information like this out to the parents? I know that you have a training, and some parents at the end of the evening, they can't get their excuses, excuses, whatever, you know, but maybe send home a flyer of, you know, what the different bullying things are, hotlines that you have that parents can call? Who they specifically need to call for each school site, you know, or where their student could go to? You know, maybe they don't feel like talking to the principal, but maybe, maybe list different people in the school that they would be willing to talk with them if they could have that, keep that.
Those are great suggestions, actually.
Tricia.
Oh, Tricia. I just wanted to, just to piggyback on some of the comments that Mr. Maeda shared, that there was, there, speaking to your question, John, about, regarding this, excuse me, about training, we did have a, a really, really good preliminary, probably a three-hour CHAMPs training at the middle school. And I think probably almost all of Scott's staff was trained. And then each of us, each of the elementary principals came and brought a staff member with us, Diana and I, and then also, and Gary was with us. We visited Isabel Middle School. So to speak to your question, Mrs. Rangel, we don't have to go too far. Isabel Middle School is doing an outstanding job implementing CHAMPs. We were very impressed, indeed, that really excited and pumped up. So we really want to support the efforts that, I know Scott is wanting to do in implementing CHAMPs, and I think it would behoove us to kind of be really consistent in if our children at the elementary are trained in CHAMPs. And it's really not, it's not a program, it's really a philosophy. And it starts with not just, you know, it encompasses the bullying, but it's that whole philosophy of creating a very, very positive environment, an inviting environment, a place where students want to be, where parents feel welcome, where, you know, folks feel welcome, where students take pride in who they are and being at their school, being at the Isabel Middle School. They have beautiful hallways, clean, banners everywhere, and it's about creating that, making your school be like the Magic Kingdom, you know, in Disneyland, and being excited to be there. And you think about folks that work at Disneyland, what do they have? They have a smile on their face. And so it's this whole philosophy. So I would love for, you know, board members to, I would like to do another visit to Isabel. And he's very welcoming, the principal there, and he's really turned things around there. So very impressive.
Good to hear.
And Tricia does make a distinction, and it is true. We need to get the bullying, you know, the no tolerance for bullying message out there, but it's the social skills program where, that, that we're talking about. There, it's not really anti-bullying programs. There's anti-bullying information and what the consequences are, and getting that information out there. But there's also then the social skills program, the social skills, not even programs, but just, we said, that philosophy in our schools that we really haven't pushed as much lately. All the schools have sort of done all these different things. It hasn't been a systematic cohesive approach. And that's what I think, we want to really make good choices that we know we can implement and not just get something in.
Just to do it.
Just to do it.
Okay, just a couple more comments, do you?
I did have a question. I know I'm looking kind of up what programs are going to be put in or what programs are going to be put in place. How much interaction has gone on or communication with our students regards to what they feel they might need? Because I think what our elementary students may say, or our middle school students may say, they need, it's going to be significantly different than what our high school students are saying. And I think if we're going to meet their needs, we need to hear from them versus what us as adults, because bullying is not the same as what we say bullying is.
Exactly. Last comment?
I just would like to see a special twist for our special education students. They tend to be there on the bottom of the pecking order, and they get subtle and not so subtle bullying, and then they turn around and in their midst are looking at, who can they lord it over? And, you know, I do my best to stop that within my groups, but I think it's kind of pervasive, and I've seen it in middle school also.
All right, some followers to work on.
Your question.
Yeah, very good. Okay, so next, Tricia.
Again, like, like bullying, this next report is something that I believe the board also need to be updated on. I'm sure you've heard of ASIS, but the emphasis that we're going to provide tonight is really, it press upon you that this is a huge program in our district. We have around 450 students involved with ASIS, it is, from K through middle school. We also have 21 adults responsible for writing this program. We have those students, 450 of them, from anywhere from three to four hours a day, up to six o'clock in the evening. We receive from the state a little over $500,000 for running the program. And they're very tight in terms of accountability. They review the program, they visit it, and they are very particular as to what they require, you know, to maintain quality in your program. And so, you know, again, when Carol retired last year, we knew that this program was a massive one. It's almost like a school, you know, an elementary school. And so we've asked her to assist us also. The Garrett company had bran new into it, that we needed somebody who had the expertise in making sure that the program continues with the same quality that she had left with her imprint on it. And so this evening, you will get an update from Gary and Carol regarding ASIS, how the program is going, and again, give you an idea of how useful this has been to us as a school. So Carol, Gary?
As Mr. Johnson shared, we have a coordinator at each site, and then 17 activity leaders that work with students directly. And it's, and the law states that it's from any time school gets out until at least six o'clock at night. So our program runs until six o'clock at night. Many times, the staff members are there with only a custodian. Many, many times, the principals are there, but sometimes they're not, and they're not always available. So they really are on those campuses, you know, working this, on, on, on putting this program, keeping this program together on their own, for many, many long late hours. The purpose and objective to the after-school program has changed over the years. When we first started, it was called after-school, and it had been around many years before that. And then they decided to call it extended learning, and now the latest thing hot off the press is expanded day. And with every one of those name changes, philosophies about the program have changed. And, and expectations change. We're in the, we're in the second year of a three-year cycle. Next year, the person sitting in this seat will be writing a new plan for the after-school program. The plan is really in-depth, when, and I, I've never really shown you the plan, but there are 40 assurances that the state asks you to meet, and of the, and those 40 assurances are, every one of those 40 assurances is addressed in the plan in depth and in detail. So it's quite an extensive plan to write. So moving on, anyway, I, I wrote the plan last time, and in this packet, I included the goals, the vision and the goals that were in place at the time I wrote the plan, which was three, two years, three years ago, three years ago, because I knew about it the year before. So, and at that time, the state was pretty well funding plans that were in place, programs that were in place, the state was funding. So it funded our, our plan, no problem, and I met all of those goals and got my paper worked in, everything was fine. The, the things they ask, the expectations they ask always change year to year, they never expect the same thing. But some of the, and I did put a little history in how long this has been in the district. And it did come into the district, we started to bring it in in 2005. We went up to Sacramento, we got, we put in our initial grant. We started that program in February of 2006, and it's been in place to this day. The first time it was in place, the first three years it was in place, we were fully funded. At that point in time, they looked at our attendance and reduced us to the amount that we would sustain with that attendance. So we lost money for the program. So, we lost money, um, for the program because we didn't have a hundred and fifty students at the middle school. And we did not have, um, a hundred students at Pyru. We just didn't have those numbers. So, it, it reduced our base on our grant. Pyru eventually was received, we, we applied for what they call another universal grant to get back some of the money we lost at Pyru because they could get more, um, students back in their program. And so, we did get a little, we recouped a little of the money back that way. But the grants are now highly competitive. I applied for one for the middle school, funding an extra person, trying to get a lot more kids into the, you know, putting a lot more kids in the program to pump up the attendance, and we were not funded for that grant. So, we did not recoup the loss at the middle school. That's sort of the history. We have, we have, there's accountability that they ask you to, um, to meet, and I listed some of those. We have to account for our expenditures, but the big one is the attendance report. It's due twice a year. You are not in good standing if you miss those reporting periods. And if you are not in good standing, they will not fund your grant. So, you don't want to ever not be in good standing. With CSTs, we had an academic report that was due every year on a spreadsheet. Now, they're just going to ask for, I think, attendance and a few other things because of the fact that the CSTs are not happening. We do an annual survey of parents, students, teachers, and then try to incorporate whatever their issues are into training for the staff. Or we talk, uh, talk to principals about issues, whatever we need to do, that's how we use the, the, um, surveys. And then the county slash state, because there's a person that is at the county, but he really works for the state somehow. So, he kind of works for both. Every year, they come out and they do a walkthrough of the program to see if we're meeting the expectations of the program. And this year, Gary organized it and scheduled the walkthroughs, and they, the, the staff, um, um, came together and we wrote the, the paperwork. It's extensive. There are questions that, I just shake my head about that. You know, what is your RTI plan? I think they're asking those poor kids at the after-school program about their RTI plan. But it was, it was kind of convoluted, but we addressed it. And, um, they got together and we, we addressed it all together, and they were really good about writing it up. But that was one of our staff development days because it takes that much, um, it just takes that intense focus to make that happen. And, um, and they don't, you know, so they need help with what vocabulary and the language and the how-to-work things and all of that. And that was, that was a great, um, thing to go through. So, and Gary's been handling that. And then the county slash state person will bring in other two people with him, and they'll do informal walkthroughs so that they have a pretty good idea of what our program looks like. Our program is, is one of the few that is actually run by the district. We may be one of two. Uh, there may be another one out there, but we are, there, there, districts don't run these programs. They have a community-based organization running them or, or, um, of one sort or another. We're, we're, we're very different in that. We as a district are running that program. And it, it, it does take a lot of resources on the part of the district. Do you have a question?
Yes, speaking about resources, so I guess my question was, um, how, how do we typically run? Does this encroach on the general fund at all? Do we, are we, are we exactly, you know, expenditures being our, our revenues?
This is one of those grants that you have to spend every single penny. You cannot carry anything over. So, every year, we make sure every single penny is spent. Funny, you should ask that question because the one thing I think people don't understand about the grant, that grant, and I don't care what year you started the grant in, in two thousand and two, it was seven dollars and fifty cents a child. That amount has not changed. There is no indication that amount will ever change. Now, keep in mind, two thousand and two to two thousand and fourteen. So, you know, you, you, your, your, your cost of doing business changes and changes fairly quickly. So, the, and the, and you can't get rid of staff. You can't cut the program. There's no way to cut the program. The, the law is twenty to one, the rules aren't twenty to one. If you don't have twenty to one.
You don't have program.
Then you don't have a program, basically. So, um, it, it's so, yes, the fin, there are financial challenges to this program that, um, impact, that can impact the program. And certainly with the new laws being passed, the Obamacare, the healthcare issues, a lot of those things, there's a, there's a, a, um, there's a very good chance that those will impact the program financially. What those ramifications are, I don't know at this point, but certainly something that you, um, could be aware of. So, there are, I, I mentioned before the assurances, the main ones that, that I deal with in the program are like the twenty to one, that the students need to be there every day, that you can only count them there if they're there for ninety minutes. You know, we have to have an early, um, start, um, early release late start policy, which I provided to you. And when the auditors come in, what we said in that policy is what they want to see. We had, we had only wait to write our policy under the assurances, in which they have to spend fifteen hours at the program. But if they left at five o'clock or four thirty, as long as they were there ninety minutes, you know, their, their attendance counts. But they still have that for fifteen hours. And so, I included that with yours so that you could see what our, our policy was as far as the program goes. And if, if parents, like catechism's a big issue in, in this community. And we've made arrangements through, um, an early release form that parents can fill out so that we don't get damed when we release our kids for that, that, for catechism at that time of year. Because it, it does happen in there, it does impact the program. And rather than have to count them absent, we just have this form filled out saying, this is what we're doing. And we've been on file. The district does have to provide some kind of in-kind, um, amount. And it's one-third of the grant, it's a hefty amount. So, what, what, what would one-third of five hundred and six thousand be, right? It's a hundred and something, I think, hundred and seventy, hundred and sixty. But, um, so that's a huge in-kind, and, um, I, I, I struggle with it every year. Um, I've never asked the district to put in any real monetary pieces, but we do get our SNAP through our, our food services. And we paid, in the past, we've paid for part of it, but there certainly was a great amount that was not, um, something we paid for. So, we could put that into in-kind. We have custodians on the campus, we have our principals there on the campus, um, facilities are there. So, I've used those pieces as our in-kind match. Our technology, we had one of the tech guys come and make sure everybody had their email and could get on and, you know, so, so through those, um, our, the health nurse, um, does the CPR training every year. So, those are all in-kind pieces that the district uses, um, to, to meet that. And, and we do need it. It, it, it's, it can be a struggle, but we, we get there with that. It's not an issue. We do, um, most years, last year was just a little different. Part of it being the fact that I always did in-service or staff development for ACES on the same day the teachers did staff development. And we took those days back for teachers. And I didn't realize there's, there's something in the, the rules that govern the program where you can actually take a day of school and have the training on those days. So, this year, I, I finally said, I, I can't deal with this not having staff development and having to deal with all the other stuff. So, we did, we did take those days, and we take three of them. So, we had three days throughout the school year. We always put them right before a break, and it seemed to be just fine. There weren't complaints from parents, they just needed to know, and they were ready to go on their vacations a little early, and they were all fine with them for the most part. So, we've done three big trainings this year, two five-point-five hour and a four hour. And then we always have the ones right before school where they do the first day, first day then CPR. So, we've done that. Um, we've, we're beginning to train on what Common Core is. And the after-school program has always been more hands-on, more thematic-based. And so, they're feeling very comfortable with all of this. They went to the Edge Up Conference in, at the county, and they were looking around going, we, we know this, we've heard this. This is great, you know? They were, they were very happy with that. There are also things that, that the program's required to offer. It has to offer a homework slash tutoring time. It has to offer SNAP. Some are connected to that SNAP. They have to understand nutrition, um, and that, and that piece about healthy eating, um, enrichment activities, and physical activity daily. And we use Spark and Game Day for those, and also youth developments. So, we're talking about those social skill things, well, youth development's a huge part of that. And they strongly encourage STEM activities, or STEAM now as it's known. And now it has another acronym, some other letter in there. And, um, what's the other one they, they, um, oh, and service learning projects. Now, we have not been reverberated about the service learning projects, but they, 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 that's one of the areas of emphasis they would like to see us move to. We really focus on social studies and science as a thematic units. We talked a lot this year about writing and would like to do a lot more with writing next year. And then we, we developed a plan for that five to six o'clock time when parents are pulling out kids. And so, I believe at all sites now, they have a tutoring time, they add their homework time. Now, they have a tutoring time, like time for some kids that need more help with homework. And the other kids then get their choice time. So, it seems to work out very well that way. The next steps are, uh, you know, I, uh, there's a, there's a kind of a new department at the CDE that's called Extended or Expanded Learning. And they put the after-school program into that department. They are looking at ways to, um, kind of increase the potential of the program, is what I would say, through, um, through the expectations they have. So, so in writing this next grant, it's going to be a little challenging because there's a lot of, of things we'll have to address. And I think, I was telling Mr. Johnson or somebody, I went to Sacramento and I read grants. I had to know what these grants were like. So, I went to Sacramento, I was there for a week, and I read Twenty-First Century Grants, which is the federal version of the after-school program. The federal program has a rubric that you have to address, and it is very comprehensive. And all of the people that I dealt with, um, through the, you know, email and things that help us in, in our district were there. And the message that I got was that, you know, they are going to put something in place that is higher quality, that they really believe in this extended learning, that, that, that they want to see kids in those programs doing these wonderful things related to science engineering, up-leveling the math, really doing the hands-on pieces. And I did get the feeling they were going to expect that next plan to address all of those. So, I'm really glad I went to the grant, um, reading because I, it was eye-opening. So, that's.
Any questions?
So, you're, you're saying that next year, then, the district needs to be thinking about a new plan that we're going to have through this. I know one of the questions that I get sometimes is, I know that if the children are in the program, like this year, they're automatically in it next year, or how does that work?
They, they, they are only, and there's a reason why I did it that way. I think some is, sometimes that's not the way it's done. But most of our kids meet the criteria most definitely. And the reason that we roll it over is because they have to meet that attendance requirement. And if you're spending that first month trying to get kids enrolled in that program, you lose all that attendance. And we couldn't afford that in the beginning, so that's just the way I started to do it. And, and, you know, and we do have criteria in place that I'm, we, I'm not sure has been fully implemented at all sites. Mainly because we have waiting lists at just a few sites, not all sites. But if kids are missing days and there's a waiting list, they can be certainly asked to leave the program. It's not something anybody likes to do. But there are rules for, um, you know, people that are using the program, pulling their kids out early. And those sorts of things can be asked to leave. So, there's a procedure in place for that if you need to.
Could I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
Please, um, I just, I, I have to credit, I think it's already apparent, but I, I just want to credit this very dear. When, when, when I attend a director's meetings now, um, there's not one director of an ACES program who works less than fifty percent just with ACES, just with ACES. So, the success of the program is just a tremendous amount of work that she's accomplished in terms of just providing a whole collection of project-based learning thematic units that are now so, so appropriate. And that some of the topics, the training, high-level, high-caliber trainings, gone over Common Core. It is extended, it is no longer, it's not SNAP, it's MAP time, it's really providing them with, you know, lessons on how to provide Common Core. It says, it's how the, last one, we had another aspect, we had Jennifer Ward teaching ELD strategies for, for after-schools. So, we're trying to parallel and, and, and really complement and support the construction.
We had someone from the intern, someone that was working with the special ed, came in and did some ADHD training. So, now, we're trying to pull in, uh, resources because the, the kids in the program really need the information. They need the training. We're trying to get the, the, the training a bit more.
In, in conclusion, I just want to agree a couple of things that I think, uh, are significant for the board to take away with the base of this presentation. Number one, we wanted to stress upon the board that this program is staffed and, and secondly, that it is not an adjunct program, but that it mirrors what's going on in the regular program. And of course, with Carol's report, it turns out quite, it will have to be much more aligned with what's going on in the classroom academic program in terms of the new applications that will be submitted to the state. So, those are the two takeaways.
When, when will we begin to prepare for the new funding?
I would suggest. Yeah, I would suggest the application process probably starting to, you know, begin in the fall. And I highly recommend Carol to start working on that as soon as possible. She has the experience, she has the expertise, she knows what they're looking for, she's had the program for a number of years. So, I would suggest that we could ask her to play a major role in that aspect. I think we're doing a pretty good job, like you and Gary are saying. You know, the directors who run this program, they're a hundred percent in charge. And we're kind of, you know, right now, um, we're kind of doing the best we can with that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, item J, consent items. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by a simple motion. None of the items will be discussed unless a board member or member of the audience requests discussion. Okay, I need a motion.
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. The move is seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pay up and dispost. Okay, motion pass, five to zero. Uh, next, item K is action item, uh, to approve the adoption of resolution number thirteen dash fourteen dash five for approval of assignments of teachers who are teaching outside of their credential authorizations or on an emergency permit. Okay, um, so I need a motion for that.
So, move. So move.
Thank you, Dave. And move seconded to approve the resolution thirteen dash fourteen dash five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, motion carried, five zero. Thank you. Okay. And item six, approve adoption of resolution number thirteen dash fourteen dash zero six for layoff of classified employees.
So move.
Thank you, John, is there a second?
Second.
Virginia, thank you. Okay, discussion on this and could you...
Sure. The resolutions for classified employees and item one point one and one point two, the NFL, the Neighborhood for Learning preschool program on our Sesquice School campus. And the program is funded through First Five. And one of the requirements in order for us to continue receiving that funding is to align with the requirements of program whereby the preschool teacher and the preschool IA have to have a certain certificate in order to receive the funding. In this case, the current employees do not hold the certificates. There's a caveat to this, and one is, my understanding is the IA, the individual that's holding that position, has some of the requirements, the AA degree and the hours of service, where she can possibly apply for the certificate. If she does that, we'll be able to continue her in that position. The current teacher does not hold the certificate and does not plan to get that anytime soon. The nice thing is that we're in the process of capturing some funding, break school declined funding. And so Cynthia, Patricia Cervantes, who's the director of the program, has put in to see if she can capture that funding and bring it to Fillmore, which would actually double the service that we currently have. If we're able to capture that funding, we'll be able to continue with the current employees and add a new teacher with a site supervisor certificate. So I'm hoping that we can pull those funds and capture them and expand our program and keep both of those employees. But we're in a situation, until we have those final numbers in place, unfortunately we have to take this action. Item one point three, one point four, and one point five, those are all vacant positions. And we've negotiated with CSCA. One, the MAW position has been eliminated. The clerk positions and food services can be renegotiated. And there's a new position with a different title in that place. And the purchasing clerk, the account clerk, was actually negotiated as an upgrade. We reclassified that to an account clerk too, which is a higher classification. And we've already hired staff in those positions. And so we're getting those three, the MAW coordinator, the clerk, and the purchasing assistant, account clerk, just getting them off our books, they're vacant at the time. And we want to clean up so that we have a position control within our system that all current positions are filled and cleans up our books. So that's, the resolutions to do two pieces.
I was going to ask, what kind of dollars are we getting? Is the NFL program?
NFL.
Yeah, what kind of dollars do we get there?
I don't know the exact dollar amount to deal, do you have...
No.
I know it pays for the teacher, the IA, the in-kind would be the facility, we use our facility. Fantastic. And it also funds the director that is actually housed in Santa Paula, and there are also preschools in Santa Paula as well. There was a point in time where Santa Paula Elementary District was not able to continue with the amount of employees that they had. And we were able to fold that grant over and accept it here in Fillmore, which, as you know, there's a high need for preschools in the community. And the goal would be to have all of our children in Fillmore attend preschool before kindergarten. So anything we can do to continue...
Growing the program.
Growing programs, whether it be through First Five or other avenues, we want to continue.
And NFL is a preschool program and it's under the direction of Fillmore Unified School District. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a program called Neighborhoods for Learning.
Right.
Funded by First Five and backed by employees, our Fillmore Unified School District employees.
Now, the other preschools in the community of Fillmore, do they have to meet these same requirements? Do you happen to know? I mean, as a school district, we're having to, they're being more stringent with us.
Well, I...
I'm just wondering if the federal, I assume they're federal preschools.
I can't speak for the private school, there's a preschool town.
I guess I'm zeroing in on the one over by St. Kate Town.
Yeah, I'm sure they follow the same guidelines.
That works.
Yes, and if a private sector were to open a school, they would have to have a, the site supervisor is a licensed certificate that at least one individual passed a hold at the site. And we can add teachers, but we have to have one certified site supervisor.
I'll get your answer on the policy.
Okay, any other questions, go ahead, go ahead. No? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the adoption resolution thirteen dash fourteen dash zero six, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? No? Okay, five zero, pass. Okay, item L, future meetings. John, you want to talk about the special meeting we're going to be having?
So it's not, it's not on there, but it should be added. You're having a special meeting on April seventh. Three board members are flying up to Natomas School District near Sacramento to examine, I guess, the district from which we've got a candidate for superintendent. And so that's going to be added on to the list of meetings. So it'll be an all-day thing. The three board members that are going will be myself, Tony Prado, and Lucy Rankle.
And since there are three of us attending, there will be an agenda posted within the time limit for you. And then we also, then, when we get back, we will be calling another special meeting in order for us to debrief with the other two board members of the information that we obtained about this particular candidate. And then hopefully everything works out the way it should. On April fifteenth, our next scheduled regular board meeting, we will be announcing our new superintendent. And hopefully they will be here too, so that he can be, he or she can be introduced to the public. Do we want to set that meeting now? Because otherwise it's...
Well, yeah, I think, sure.
Well, we have to debrief, we have to debrief as far as what we...
For that meeting.
For that information, yes, that we obtained.
So if it's on the seventh, so the next day's the eighth, that's a Tuesday.
And that meeting, we have the ALCAP meeting, don't we, at that time? So that would be bad. So the ninth or the tenth, Wednesday or Thursday would be good for us to meet and then either approve or not approve the candidate.
Okay, so I'm good with either day.
Virginia, do you have a preference?
Wednesday.
Wednesday for best, so is the ninth okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so we will put down April ninth as a special meeting for, which will be closed session. Okay, and the other...
The, technically speaking, the Natomas meeting, is it going to be closed or open?
It will be open with, we'll set the agenda for the day and then we'll, in closed session, we will have a discussion with subgroups from that community for us to ask questions, make sure we have the right information on our candidate.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because it's going to be posted here in Fillmore.
In Fillmore and over there, yes. And in the board, yes. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so then we also have then April fifteenth, which will be the day then that we announce our superintendent, hopefully, and then May sixth would be the following one.
Just for clarification, did you say that the sessions at Natomas were going to be closed?
We open it up as a public meeting, because it is a notice meeting, yes. And then we will move to go into closed session. And during closed session, you'll see on the agenda that it's listed, a meeting with various groups of that district. And we will be there approximately nine thirty to about four thirty. And so we'll gather information then.
It's closed session because we're going to be discussing personnel.
Yes, personnel, right. Okay. Any questions from anyone? Okay, so any closing comments of board members or agenda building items, Dave?
Well, I'm kind of interested in Carol and your program, if we could have some updates of area, you know, on the building issue, even with the ACES program, how we're doing.
All right, Virginia?
So just to follow up on, I'd ask for a report regarding the fifty-eight students and what the plan is to address their needs. So I assume Dr. Machino that we're going to have a presentation at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is kind of picking back, you know, what John was talking about, those fifty-eight students. I just wanted to make a comment that I remember speaking to Mr. Torres.
Hebe.
When these seniors were freshmen, I remember him making a comment at, not back to school at that open house, which was held in the spring. And the comment that he made came back then was that we had a group of freshman students where half of them were failing half their classes and that they were not on schedule in any way, shape, or form to graduate. Now, this is...
As freshmen?
As freshmen.
I'd be predicted four years in.
Well, based on the semester grades, the fall semester grades, that we had a high D and F rate at that time. And he also made the comment that we had a group of sophomores that were not doing very well, and that was going to become an issue. And if, at all possible, in any way, shape, or form, I would like to have Mr. Torres address the board if he was willing to, if we could contact him and see how far off my comments are in relation to this particular issue. Anyway, I think it's a very interesting idea only because, again, we're concerned about these fifty-eight students that are not, that are in danger of not graduating. And to kind of look at their history as to what, who they were and where they were, they're freshmen here. And this, I don't know if we can address, like, the sophomore group that they just graduated.
Well, my daughter's in the sophomore group, so I can, I can tell you quite a bit about that class.
Okay. Well, the other thing is, I had requested a few board meetings ago about some information regarding school farm. And, you know, in terms of budget, in terms of the organization, how does the advisory group operate? And we haven't got anywhere with it and I haven't heard anything, so I was wondering if we could give some kind of a report on what goes on at school farm and how's it organized and what is their budget and some of their expenditures.
There was, I brought this up with the council, they're willing to...
Yeah, no, I...
So just, you know, the budget thing, we need some company.
Right, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay, well, if we, we have that planned maybe for the seniors that issue on the fifteenth and maybe that first weekend, first meeting in May, then we could try to get the, the school farms on them. Okay.
Could I make a clarification on Tony's years? Tony, I think you're talking about the sophomores now being the class of two thousand and fourteen because in two thousand and fifteen, we had ninety-ninth graders who came to us from the middle school who had not promoted. So I think you're a year off. So it's the class of fifteen where we had everybody failing, the class of fourteen is this current class, the sophomores.
I remember those ninety on the middle school. Okay, any other comments or agenda building? Nope? Okay, if not, then some of those that you... Thank you, Virginia, do you have a second?
Second.
John, all those in favor of adjourned meeting?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned.